Good evening, welcome to the City Harrison Council Meeting for March 7th, 2023. If you'd please rise, join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd please remain standing, I'd like to invite Judge Amy Circe from Hamilton County, Lord Tom, please, to provide this evening's dedication.
Thank you. Good evening, may please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support for these elected officials as they begin their meeting tonight. Help them engage in meaningful discussion, allow them to grow closer as a group, and help them nurture the bonds of community. Fill them with your grace, Lord God, as they make decisions that affect the residents, employees, and visitors to the city of Harrison. Continue to remind us all that what our elected officials do here is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, amen.
I just want to thank you for inviting me here tonight to say this prayer. It's truly an honor. I was born and raised in Harrison Township, lived there for 21 years, then Crosby Township. I now live in the city of Harrison and serve on the tree board. And I just want to say that I am very, very proud of the mayor and council members and all the elected officials and the administration and staff of the city of Harrison. I'm just, I'm very proud, so thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Egner.
Here.
Mr. Grubbs.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mr. Mains. Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we excuse Mr. Mains.
Second. Roll call to excuse Mr. Mains.
Dole.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
First item this evening is approval of the council meeting minutes for February 21st, 2023. So moved. Second. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
We will move into guests and visitors. This evening, we have a presentation from the American Legion.
At this time, we're donating, the chief requested a donation to take care of a mask, underwater mask, so that people, when they're working underwater, can breathe and talk to people above water. That mask costs $1,677.32, and that is the amount Jean is now presenting to the sergeant. And we keep getting a lot of requests for donations, keep sending them in because we do have a little bit of money. We'd like to help these other organizations a lot.
Thank you very much to the American Legion for their generous donation. Next, we have Debbie Scheit, who would like to address council. Good evening.
Okay, I came today for two and a half years, or maybe it's three by now. Life Spring's behind my house, it's about 20, 30 feet behind my house. All they, you can tell when it's Tuesdays.
When you, where do you live?
I live on Meadow Green.
There you go, thank you.
Sorry, I've never been to one of these. Anyway, for, I usually don't, I usually wouldn't come here, I talked to them, we discussed with them. This year, we've been Facebook messaging when I, when they're blasting and whatever. And they always go, well, we're going to calm it down, and, but the kids are in charge. So now I'm worried that I need to be calling the police. If the kids are in there by themselves, there's no adult supervision going on? That kind of scares me, that there's no adult supervision going on and letting these kids do what they do. Like on Super Bowl night this year. My Super Bowl was not going boom, 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 boom. My Super Bowl was watching a football game. Theirs was screaming up to 10 o'clock when I finally messaged them and said something. And they're like, oh, the kids are in charge, they have been blasting. Well, my TV did not blast boom, boom, boom. Mine was running football players. So I'm not sure what's going on over there, that they're doing this. But anyway, they, I don't know why they have to blast. I don't understand why we can't do a ordinance or make them soundproof that house, that warehouse. Because I don't hear St. John's. I mean, it's another little block down, but I still don't hear St. John's. And I don't understand why they can get by with this. And even though I've been messaging them and I talked to them, and like I said, they came to my husband this past week because they knew I was, we were getting mad about it. Two years ago, to give you an idea, I was out in my yard, I was talking to my neighbor, and so then I walked back into my yard, all of a sudden I snapped my foot off. I'm laying out in my yard, they're blasting Lion King. Nobody can hear me screaming at the top of my lungs because I didn't have my phone on me. I'm not one that carries a phone around. I had to crawl into the house, try to get my phone, get the neighbor over there to help me out because nobody could hear me with their screeching Lion King.
So was it during special, if you don't mind me asking, just to understand, is it during special events, or is it every Sunday or Saturday night?
It's Tuesday nights usually, Tuesday nights, Wednesday nights, Saturday nights, Sunday mornings, Sunday all afternoons. You can come by any time and you'll hear boom, 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 boom. No music, it's just boom, boom, boom. And the only time they have music is when I think they have an outside thing going on, and that's like what happened with me with my broken, when I snapped my foot off. Lion King was screeching everywhere, and nobody could hear me because of whatever they were doing over there.
So it's inside the building and outside the building?
Yeah, it's inside their building.
Okay.
But they got, they blasted, I don't understand that. I don't, I have my radio on, but nobody can hear me. But I don't try to make the whole city hear me. I've lived here since 1989, and I've never had this situation. And like I said, I've been trying to avoid bringing it up, but then this past year, or even last year, I was emailing you guys, different guys, and the only one that answered me was Risa. Other than that, nobody would answer any of my emails here about the situation.
I know that Debbie emailed me a few times.
Nobody's called me, no. The only person that ever has is Risa out of all of you guys.
I've never gotten an email from you.
I talked to you on the phone, I called you. Because I remember you said you lived on Meadow Green.
I don't remember you ever calling me, but that's fine if you did.
That's irrelevant.
That's right.
So, over the course of time, I know that I personally got a couple emails that I forwarded to the building and zoning department, they're responsible for those enforcement items. Well, I've sent it to, that's where I sent it to, so maybe you guys forwarded it on. But, so, from a standpoint of that, we're aware that it's been coming in, so we'll get it to the right department. Well, I, the last time you contacted me, I sent it, an email to one of the people in charge, one of the adults at Life Spring, and he acknowledged, we had a conversation, that there were some issues and that he was working on setting some guidelines for when some of the younger people were in charge. I don't know if since that time, that last time that you sent me an email and I responded to you that, you know, that I had sent it forward in the past. Anyhow, has it changed since then, or is it still continuing?
Well, this past weekend, it was okay. And I will, and I will thank them for, two weekends ago, they pre-messaged me and told me they were going to be having some kind of party, which I don't understand with parties, why they have to blast it? I mean, that big that you need to blast?
So I stressed the individual I spoke with that, that one thing that can help them the most is communication, to make sure they have an open line of communication with their neighbors, when they're going to have events that could impact them, so that they're aware, and that maybe they could get feedback before the event so that their things can be mitigated in advance. Secondarily, if they can put initially administrative controls in place, which is something in writing that says you don't turn the volume up above whatever number, we'll see how that works. I said, beyond that, I said, we're probably going to have to look at engineering controls because there are ordinances about sound. We already have sound ordinances.
See, I thought we did.
And there are timeframes on it, and it's measured at the property lines. So it's not over against the church, and it all depends on, so we're going to pick up the sound all of a sudden. It all depends on where you're at, what time of day it is, what day of the week it is. So those all have, in our code, as far as sound goes, those all play into how loud things are allowed to be or not allowed to be. So I'll reach back out to the church this week, see where they're at on this. Hopefully that this will come to a resolution and it won't be a problem, that if there's going to be an event, you're aware of it well in advance, and hopefully it's not as disruptive as it's been in the past. I have neighbors that they play in a band, and on Sunday afternoon, they do band practice. And I actually enjoy it sometimes because they're actually pretty good. But sometimes, some of my neighbors don't appreciate it. So they're not outrageously loud, but they, sometimes you hear the same drumroll for the 50 or 300th time, sometimes it can get to you. It's me today. Can I turn it off?
He turned off a bit.
I mean, I agree with you, I like music, I have no problem with it, if it was music. But all I hear is the boom, 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 all I'm hearing is the light.
The bass, the bass carries through.
And if they have a beautiful guitars or whatever else, I, you know, I might hear that. If they have an organ, it's like St. John's, it's cool, they're gorgeous. But all I hear is the boom, 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 and sometimes it's like really loud that. Me and my friend, we have our own TVs, he'll start screaming, and God, he can't even hear my TV, so he has to turn it up, he's 70 years old. And then me, well, I'm 63, and I don't turn mine up, but then I have to start turning up because he starts blasting his because he can't hear with the boom, boom, boom. And next thing you know, we're both fighting with each other.
Right.
Because we're trying to outplay the boom.
I'm glad you brought it forward because I don't think we've heard, I haven't heard anything since they opened. I know there was some initial concerns right when they opened, but haven't heard anything since. So...
I didn't, let me put it this way, I didn't want to make it into a big pub, you know, any big pub. I mean, it's like when they were building, I had called the police many times at midnight because they were building at midnight, and the cops are like, nooo, they're not supposed to be building at midnight. And you say, you go over there, I can hear the truck going beep, 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 just backing up, going to the back of the court. And so I had to call the cops, just to get them to stop. Because back then, I worked at 2:00 in the morning, so working up till midnight, hearing beep, 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 was getting irritating.
Where do you live on that?
The second house.
Next to...
Okay, you're on Caroline first?
Yes, I'm the second house, and then when I look out.
The left, as you drive in, there's...
My backyard is, my backyard is theirs.
So you live next door to the realms?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. I know they only, they have, the daughter, they didn't even know, the daughter has a problem with their parking lights shining in her bedroom. I have that situation, but I, we, I've tried to maneuver things so I don't see all their parking lights. I've complained about that to them, but they don't care. That goes in when you're in the other because they want their parking lights on and whatever else. And you just have to deal with it, you know?
Right.
Some people don't have respect, some people do. Like I don't go shining my lights everywhere by then, and I don't try to start trouble with them because I try to show respect, but they don't. And that's where I'm coming into play where, after two years ago, when my, like I said, my quick thing that irritated me, so then I started talking to a Jeff, I don't know if you know Jeff?
Jeff Turley.
He gave me his phone number, we were texting back and forth because that's when their property was getting destroyed. And he asked me to let him know when I would hear the trucks back there because they were handling off-roaming. People at night were coming off-roaming and destroying their grass and stuff. So we used to text back and forth. Well, all of a sudden, he quit answering me, so he didn't want to hear any more from them. So that's when I started Facebook messaging them and saying, hey, this is going on or that's going on, whatever. And I tried to keep it away from the city because I figured it's my, you know, my problem. They're 30 feet behind my yard, I don't know why they had to build so close to us. But then they explained they wanted a YMCA, and well, that didn't happen.
Well, it's not happened yet, so...
I mean, if they would have put it on the other side of the property, probably I wouldn't hear it someday. But when they're, I mean, my backyard, if this is the end of my backyard, their building is probably maybe another five feet from that map. If you would go back five more feet, that's how close they are to my backyard. So I see everything, I hear everything, and those little pine bushes, you know, people come over my house and they go, where is, why is there a warehouse behind you? And I know there's no warehouse in the neighborhood. Because people come over and they, that's all we can see, the big white warehouse behind my house. Because there's like the prettiness that I used to have with the crops is all gone. So as for the noise, I just wanted to calm it down. We'll put up some soundproofing, like what the school does. And I don't think, like, a lot of people don't understand, when they went down to the skating rink, you probably didn't hear it because the skating rink, if you remember, was soundproofed because it always hit, the music blasted because she's skating. And now, when they rebuild, they didn't rebuild the soundproofing. Or they got their doors up, I don't know.
Okay, well, we are aware of it, so we'll...
Well, that's why, my husband goes, don't start troubling. I just like, bring your attention, maybe somebody can help me with the sound, that's all I'm asking.
We will...
Want to start trouble, they seem to be, they seem to be nice people.
They're not causing trouble, you just want to live peaceful in your own house.
Yeah, I just want to be able to listen to my own TV without having to blast it. Well, thank you guys for your time, I just, like I said, it just made me think I better start telling people because nobody believes me, except for my neighbors. Because they hear the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other visitors this evening that would like to speak? Okay, we'll move into the business portion of the meeting. First item is a vote on an ordinance amending the amount appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison, Ohio. So moved. Second. Any discussion on the item?
I assume this is, this is the first one that was in the packet for the $46,280. All right, in terms of discussion on this, I just want to point out that there's two main drivers for this appropriations. The first being, this is the adjustment based off the most recent police officer contract or the last year, the contract that was negotiated. So this is basically just doing the adjustment based off the increase that is coming through. The second piece of this is actually relating to a movement of a position in building and zoning from part-time to full-time. So the breakout of that is about $31,000. The police increase in total for the department is about $14,000. There's also about a $1,700 appropriation for the mask, obviously before the donation came in, but obviously, we do have to approve the appropriation to spend the money, even though it was a donation. But those are the three things that are included in this appropriation. Ordinance.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
That is ordinance three of 23.
So the next item, very similar title, a vote on an ordinance amending the amount appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison, Ohio, specifically for the West Road Overpass Project.
So I have some discussion on this, Mike?
Motion, second, first. We have a motion or on this item?
I'll motion to approve.
Nice.
Let's put it to the discussion.
We have a motion and second, okay, discussion.
Okay, so Mike was unable to attend tonight, but he gave me a letter that he wanted me to read to you all, and he's pretty passionate about this, so just bear with me for a second. So, dear mayor and council, I would like to apologize for missing yet another council meeting, especially with tonight's important vote. I have started a new position at the modal shop that will require a bit more travel in my first year as I learn the products and meet with customers. Going forward, I should be able to schedule my travel around council meetings with the hope that I won't miss any more meetings this year. While I have missed two in a row, I believe that the record will show I've missed very few during my five years on council. On a dark and rainy night in September of 2018, a 55-year-old woman was found deceased on the West Road Overpass. I don't think anyone that has ever driven over, walked across, or ridden their bicycle over would have been surprised that this happened. It's unfortunate that a fatality made everyone in this community gravely aware that the pedestrian access over this bridge was long overdue. I have blueprints that state the design of this bridge from 1959 as the federal highway interstate system was being developed and Interstate 74 passed through Harrison, connecting Cincinnati to Indianapolis and changing our city forever. At the time of this overpass, at the time, this overpass was surrounded by fields of hay, corn, and soybeans. Corner Brook was the only road in the nearby area that had any houses. Soon after the completion of the interstate, and in large part due to its construction, our town began to grow. We went from a city, from a village to a city. A new high school was built in the late 60s at the corner of Dry Fork and West Road, and then roughly 10 years later, a new high school was built adjacent to the existing high school that was destined to become the junior high. The next 30 years would see the addition of three new subdivisions to the northeast of the overpass and the addition of an elementary school and new junior high on the southwest local school district campus. To the southwest, we've seen much commercial development, including not one but two Kroger grocery stores, built as well as numerous shopping and restaurants, including a new development being planned across from the existing Kroger supermarket. Harrison was once known for its many churches, fast food restaurants, and cornfields. The cornfields are quickly disappearing, and we are the fastest-growing municipality in the western Hamilton County. At this next streets committee following the fatality on September 8th, 2018, we were told that nothing could be done. Perhaps the city could place a sidewalk up to the bridge and maybe add some lights and signage, but that the bridge itself was owned by the Ohio Department of Transportation, or ODOT. Through the network I had developed while advocating for the motocross track, I contacted Carolyn Duffy of 143 Engineers, and she told me that this would be a perfect project for ODOT's safety money and that these kinds of projects were funded 100% by the state. So we began the process by contracting 143 engineers to perform a traffic count. This traffic count used cameras and recorded numerous pedestrians crossing the bridge on foot and bicycle, many of the pedestrians being school age. At this point, the city's longtime engineering firm, JMA, took over and stepped out of the process to obtain the design of a seven-foot-wide pedestrian bridge along the northwest side of the bridge with planned construction for spring of 2023. In January, it was reported to Jim Leslie, our public works director, that inflation had took the project from $1 million to $1.8 million. The state was able to find another $500,000 in state funding, but claimed that they couldn't honor the 100% funding that they had promised. So tonight, here we are, voting to approve $300,000 in city funds, so that the project can move forward this year. I feel like the state of Ohio broke their promise to the citizens of Harrison. While I realize that the state had no way to know that we would experience inflation that we haven't seen since the late 70s and early 80s, it was never mentioned in our discussions that this project would be funded at anything less than 100%. This puts our city council in a very difficult position. Do we vote to fund the remaining $300,000, to fund the project from a budget measured in millions, not the state's billions? Or do we wait until next year for the state to perhaps fund the project at 100% as promised? Why can't the state keep their promise to the residents in the Harrison area? What happens if the project cross-climb to over $2 million next year? More importantly, what happens if a pedestrian is injured or killed in the meantime? I do not envy the position my fellow council members are in this evening. My prayers are with you as you cast your vote. I have encouraged everyone I know to send a letter to State Representative Cindy Abrams and Senator, State Senator Bill Blessing. The letters I wrote to each of them are posted on Mike's Facebook page for you to use as a template. No matter the vote tonight, I would encourage you to continue sending letters encouraging our local state, our local state-elected officials to lobby their fellow state legislators for the funds that our state promised to us. Sincerely, Mike Mains.
He's not even here, still got a lot in. Any other comments? Discussion.
The only comment I'm going to put out here is the fact that this did come before finance committee, and we did, you know, we do have several options to pay for this. So we do have the funds available. However, you know, the question is, you know, do you feel like, you know, this amount of money, is this a good project for this, or do you feel like it should be spent elsewhere? But I, I just want to clarify that, you know, we do have the ability to pay for this.
And the only other thing is, we discussed with our utility director and street director that if we don't do it now, we're not guaranteed next year that the state will give us the same amount of money or more.
Correct.
Is that correct? So we got to make a decision as to what we're going to do to make sure it is done.
Yeah, the reality of it is, is we're still getting the majority of it funded through the state of Ohio, and it is a small portion that we are putting in. It just was an unbudgeted amount of money. And I think that's probably the biggest thing that gets me from, from my finance side of things is getting it right at the last minute, so.
Yeah, obviously.
Especially when we have other projects.
Right, you know, and we had worked, you know, through the budget process this year with the assumption that this would be 100%. I mean, so this was not something that was budgeted for. So obviously, that's why it's come before us tonight.
But it does play in line with the potential development along Harrison Avenue, along with the safety money being spent on Harrison Avenue for crosswalks and repaving and everything. So it is...
Question on the motion.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yes.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Nay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
So that is ordinance number four.
Didn't we have something we need to add to the agenda?
I believe we have an item to add.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add a resolution to the agenda tonight.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to add an item to the agenda. Roll call, please.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
I'll go ahead and do your motion for your, I'll read the title. So we have a resolution strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for, to approve.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
And that is resolution three of 23.
Any other items to attend to prior to reports? We'll move into reports. For my report, we've got two weeks of fish fries under our belts. The first week, I heard that every local organization ran out of fish. That is very, very good for the organizations. Unfortunately, some people had to go to the local restaurant to fill their needs. Last week was a storm, unfortunately. I think most fish fries did pretty good still, but there were some challenges to get out to the local fish fries. I encourage everybody to continue to support the local organizations that do them. All those organizations put money back into our community to make our community better and stronger. And I hope that you enjoy the season while this is going on because it's only a short period of time every year that this occurs. Earlier this evening, we had a resident come in and talk about an issue they had at their residence with noise. I encourage any resident that has an issue in their neighborhood, whether it be noise or some other thing, that potentially there's a regulation about, to contact us because some things are regulated, some things are not, and if we are not aware, those problems we can't address. So making us aware is beneficial. She also mentioned the potential of a YMCA at Life Spring Church. That probably is not going to be in the cards in the very near future because the cost has just about doubled. It went from roughly $11 million, the last number I heard was $19. $11 million was 2019 numbers, and now we're looking at $19 million. And $11 million was a stretch. So Life Spring is committed to bringing some type of recreational facility to attach to their church. It may not be a Y at this point, but the future will tell us what that's going to be. We do continue to work with them to find a beneficial use for their additional space that would, they want to find something that will benefit the city. So the city has been engaged with them to help them in that endeavor. That concludes my report for this evening. Just law director have a report? that would, they wanna find something that'll benefit the city. So the city has been engaged with them to help them in that endeavor. That concludes my report for this evening. Just law director, have a report.
Mr. Mayor, I absolutely have a report, because since you brought up fish fries, I happen to work at one every Friday. This time of year, I feel like I'm gonna smell grease in twenty-four hours. Maybe some grease, but yes, please support your little fish fries over there. It costs us.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I wanna let everybody know that we've got a planning commission next Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty. If you, if you wanna be there, you might wanna get here early, because we have limited space here, obviously, and we expect a full house. So we're gonna be discussing the New Haven Road, Carolina Trace property out there. Yeah?
My understanding, there's a public hearing at seven.
Public hearing is.
Oh, that's correct. Public hearings at seven, and then the meeting at seven-thirty. Okay. So, please, if you, if you have a voice, you want it heard, that's the time to be here. And we appreciate everybody's concern. The other thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is our scholarships that were given out from the American Legion, we're picking them up at the end of this month. So if you have a child, grandchild, or someone that's a senior at Harrison High School, and you want to have the chance of getting a scholarship, we're gonna be giving out ten one-thousand-dollar scholarships. So we need to have those filled out by the end of the month. After that, it'll be too late. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Egner, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mayor, thank you. The Rec Improvement Committee, we, we met earlier last week. We published an online survey, and five days into it, we've already had six-hundred responses. We, we, we wanna encourage everyone that lives in the community to take the survey so we know how we can improve this community center to best serve the community. A gentleman by the name of Mike Hellman came to the, to the meeting and was discussing the skate park. We're trying to get everybody's input, whatever, you know, whatever they're passionate about that's here, they would like to see here, we would like them to come to these meetings and, and discuss that with us. He was the skate park guy, he just, he had two of his, two of his friends come with him, and they were, you know, putting out ideas about what they would like to see down there, and where, where they would like to see it, and what they would like to see. It was a great conversation. That'll definitely be, you know, if, if the, if the survey is, there's enough response to the survey for the skate park, then that will be addressed sooner than later. And the next thing I wanna say, the, the high school wrestling teams, both the men's and women's team are going to the state tournament this year. We have three men's state qualifiers, one champion, Wyatt Brock is the one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-pound champion. And then the high school women's wrestling team, they, they were the Southwest Ohio Regional Tournament champions. We're, we're sending seven ladies to the state tournament. Chloe Dear Wester, she's the one-oh-five-pound champion. Reagan Briggs was the one-twenty-five-pound champion. Jessica Edwards was the heavyweight champion in the Southwest Ohio Regional Tournament. So I just wanna say good luck to them, and that's all I have. Thank you.
That Recreation Commission survey is very important. It's gonna be one of the tools that help determine how the tax dollars that have been contributed by new homes being built, the bedrooms, and by the city to match that are gonna be spent to improve all the recreational facilities here at the community center. So it's your money, tell us how you want it spent. Mr. Grubbs?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I'd like to add on to the wrestling. They actually, they had an absolutely wonderful season, I wanna wish them luck as well. Ladies are rocking it across the country. They're known across the country for how well they wrestle. And, you know, the, the men's, the young men's wrestling program has been phenomenal for, for decades, so I hope they go up there and just bring home a great win, so. And we had streets and utilities this evening. And just to, just to touch on this West Road overpass, you know, it was very hard for me to, to change after the promise of a hundred percent funding. But in reality, when we sit there and we take a look at it, we, we try to pave streets throughout the city every year, and we go to the state of Ohio for different funding sources. Sometimes they are, are funded at ninety percent, ninety-ten, sometimes it's eighty-twenty, where the, where we'll get funding from the state for eighty percent of it, and we have to pay for ten percent of it. Some of it's fifty-fifty, just depending on the project and whether we decide to move forward with it. Obviously, in this case, three-hundred thousand is not what we wanted to spend, because we didn't have it budgeted, nor did we have it in the, in the horizon to be in the budget. But in reality, it's, what, ten, fifteen percent, and at this time, that's pretty good money, where we're getting the state to ante up that much. And when we have the safety of our kids to take into account crossing that bridge, I think it's a decision, the right decision to move forward with it. Some of the other projects that we talked about in, in streets tonight, Edgewood Road was a big part of it, and then Dry Fork Interchange. Dry Fork Interchange is something that's not really gonna take place until twenty-twenty-five. We'll start bidding it out in twenty-twenty-four, I think. But we already started the planning and design of it. The original outlay is about five-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty of it is coming from township, no, one-hundred-and-twenty-five's coming from township, one-hundred-and-twenty-five from us, and two-hundred-and-fifty from, is it the state of Ohio? Yeah, state of Ohio. So half of the design of it alone is being paid by the state of Ohio. And because of the, because of where the Dry Fork Interchange lies, we're splitting the rest with the township. But that'll get us the initial design and, and how it'll be built. It is an ODOT overpass, so they have a lot of control over how that thing goes. I'd love to have a big eight-lane overpass, but I don't see that playing out. But we continue to look for resources and grant money, and I, I really wanna point that out. OKI is actually putting in about two-hundred thousand dollars, oh, no, OKI is putting in about four-point-five million dollars, sorry. And then we have another TSMO grant, and then we'll, we'll have to put in, the city of Harrison will have to put in some money, which will probably be, it says a million right now, but the way costs are rising, we're trying to plan for those things. That's, that's part of our concerns now, because we could've put that towards that. But we continue to drive forward on the Dry Fork Interchange and try to keep that on pace to happen in that twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe. Edgewood Road, hopefully, will start putting pipe in the ground June, June of this year, and it will go through December. So December, January, just depending on how the year goes. But hopefully, it's completed by December of twenty-twenty-three. In utilities, excuse me, there is one open position. Jim has four interviews to fill that position. And then down at the water plant, we do have a, one well that's coming online, and it's in the testing phase. We have another well for our water system plant that is offline right now because of some of the storm problems that, that blew through. And we have the company out working on that right now, and we'll hope to have that brought back online within the next couple of weeks. That's all I have, sir.
That project's eight-point-two-million total, start to finish today's dollars.
Yes, eight-point-two-four-eight million dollars as of right now, so.
I guess it's not a question. I'm not sure what, I mean, I know for what you're talking about all the time, because where I live, the water curve isn't that. And when I used to walk into that, I used to say, it was a choice. Is there a way of, when I used to drive down to town in Cincinnati, there used to be a bridge that had like two cages on both sides that you walked through. Can you just do that to save the money? And, and it's, they don't have cage walkers, and every bridge was on downtown Cincinnati one side.
Well, there's, go ahead, Mayor.
The state, this is a state overpass, so those would've been city or county roads. This is a state overpass, and the state dictates the design.
Oh, okay. I just was thinking, it saves you guys some money in somebody, why you take this on up?
Actually, we had brought up during the initial, some of the initial discussions, adding the pathway on the outside of it, but because of the cantilever of the bridge and some stuff that I'm not an engineer on, I mean, I understand, it, it throws the weight off on the bridge, and then it's thrown out of.
See, why is it gonna be outside? Your weight should still be the same.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Ohio controls all of that.
Yeah, the state engineer.
I didn't realize that. Because we re, just redid that bridge, and then the last thirty years of my tenure, I never.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, Craig, so we like, we should've probably added in on the dent.
Correct. It wasn't a, well, not that, not that it wasn't in the budget, at that point in time, the safety issue with the bridge wasn't in the forefront of everything, because everybody had walked it, and there'd never been a problem. And then thirty years ago, and you know this, living there, the volume of usage of that bridge for foot traffic or bicycle traffic was very minimal, and today, it's significantly more. And then we had a fatality, so.
It was bus service.
Bus service.
Anyhow.
For the kids.
Are you, did that conclude your report?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Samuels, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I do, thank you. The Finance Committee met on February twenty-eighth. As always, you know, one of the things we do, we do review the revenues and expenses, and really, we only had January to look at, and there's really nothing out of the ordinary for that month, so everything was staying where we kind of expected. But, you know, can't really look at a trend on one month, so we'll just keep an eye on it going forward. Our cash balance continues to be solid with a total of about seventeen million dollars invested with Star Ohio. And one thing that I did wanna point out with that is the fact that, you know, with that investment, and I know the interest rates increasing is causing a lot of heartburn on one side of it, but one of the things that we're seeing is actually our revenue from these investments is actually expected to go up. So I don't know that we have a full number just yet, but we did budget, I think, what, about a hundred thousand dollars, and I think we're probably looking at about a half-million dollars in revenue just on the investment. So, you know, that is one positive coming out of that. The audit status for twenty-twenty-two, the cash portion of the audit is complete. Kim will be sending it off for gap conversion and financial statement creation here in the next week or so. Some of the miscellaneous items that we discussed, the time and labor management and the learning management system is still in process at this point. There's no ETA for the completion of the project, but I know Sarah's working hard on getting that done. Some of the topics we discussed that took up most of our time, you know, we did vote on earlier in the meeting, and that included the West Road overpass. And really, our discussion was centered around our ability to cover the three-hundred-thousand dollars in cost, you know, how we would accommodate that, adjusting for the police contract, so the final year of increases, making sure we have that appropriated, and also the personnel, the position in building and zoning. So that was our discussion for the meeting. We also did approve the cost for the renovation of the community center restrooms, and those restrooms are inside the building. So we did approve those, and those will be paid out of our ARBA funds that we have available. Another topic that we have out there is constantly a topic, is the fire levy that will be expiring in twenty-twenty-five, or I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-four. So we did have our fir, first public work session on that. There was lots of lively discussion out of that meeting. You know, and, and really, you know, the goal of this meeting was just to talk about the issue at hand, the expiration of the fire levy, and where we wanted to go from here. And really, all we took away from that is just some information that we needed to provide for our next meeting. That neat, next meeting will be on Wednesday, March twenty-second, at five-thirty. This meeting is open to the public, and attendance is encouraged. So. Our next Finance Committee will occur on March twenty-eighth at four-thirty, and I believe our next Police Committee meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-first, at six P.M. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I do. For IT, we have good news. Our AV equipment will be installed here in the council chambers from April fifth to April eighteenth. And then the downtown area will get their speakers in late April to early May. So that should be good. We were expecting it to be later than that, so happy to see that move up. Our next district meeting is going to be Thursday, March ninth, at seven P.M. via Zoom. For Tree Board, just a reminder that our Arbor Day meeting is April twenty-fifth at seven P.M. at the library, and all are welcome to attend that. And our next social media meeting is going to be April fourth at eight A.M. at the Coffee Peddler. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I'd like to report on the economic development report. The development department had another recent site visit for the new five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-square-feet industrial building on Harrison Avenue and Southwest Parkway with an interested company. Rite Aid Cincinnati in Hilltop Development. The offshore high-tech company is looking to locate in a five-k square foot, five-k-plus square foot building in our region. If they choose Harrison, they could bring several hundred jobs to us as early as this summer. The CTS Tax Incentive for its twenty-thousand, twenty-seven-thousand-square-foot manufacturing facility recently approved by Harrison City Council has been submitted to Hamilton County and the state of Ohio. The company plans to add at least twenty additional employees and a one-million-seven-hundred-thousand to its payroll as a result of its expansion. The Culvers Restaurant Development on Stone Drive has been put temporarily on hold while the company completes some restructuring. It is hoped the company will close on the property with construction beginning later this summer. Contact has been made with the new owners of the old Taco Bell property, the point-eight-seven acres on Harrison Avenue. It was sold on January seventeenth for six-hundred-and-four-thousand-eight-hundred. The new owner has indicated they are working to attract a new fast food restaurant to the site. An online survey has been published for the Recreation Improvement Committee to gauge the community interest levels and different types of possible improvements at the community center property. In less than a week, there's been almost six-hundred responses. The survey will be posted online again this week, and we encourage you to take it. Visiting's, business openings and office spaces. An office sharing space called Co-Mission Collaborative has recently opened at one-oh-five-four-eight Harrison Avenue near Church on Fire. The Whitewater Whippy Dip Ice Cream Shop near the Wildcat Car Wash and Harrison High School has indicated they will open this Thursday, March the ninth. An indoor play area called Magic Land near Anytime Fitness in the Rimpy Center has indicated they will open this Friday, March the tenth. At least thirty-five employers are expected for the Harrison Job Fair on March the ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The event is open to the public, three-thirty, three-thirty P.M. to six P.M. at the Harrison High School Activities Center at nine-nine-nine-nine West Road. Gradus Development submitted revised plans for a mixed-use residential project along Carolina Trace. The preliminary plan will be heard on March the fourteenth Planning Commission meeting, with a public hearing to begin at seven P.M. The next Economic Development Committee is Tuesday, April the fourth. And if you have any, any questions or comments, please direct them to Shannon Hamons directly For Recreation, sir, tomorrow night is our meeting for Recreation Committee, so I'll have more to report at our next meeting. The Veterans Committee report, all three veterans organizations in Harrison, the VFW Road are all busy with their fish fries. We suggest that you travel around and check them all out and support the veterans in our community. Also, if you have a son who attends William Henry Harrison High School and is currently a junior, we are looking for a couple more boys to send to American Legion Buckeye Boy State. This program is award-winning. It's a development program to help young men understand our government, how it works. It's held at Miami University in June. There's no cost to the student and if you're interested, we're looking for two more, two more boys and please contact me if you are. Lastly, I'd like to say, being part of the Finance Committee, it was a difficult decision for us to move forward with spending three hundred thousand dollars on the overpass. It wasn't a decision that we took lightly. There was a lot of discussion going back and forth to determine whether it would be better for us to wait another year and see if we could apply for the money again. But since there's no guarantees in life, we don't know where the, the price of the project would be if we waited a year. I don't think it would go down as things continually increase because of inflation. But I think once we talked about it and had thought, really thought hard on it, I think that we all felt that the three hundred thousand dollars was a small price to pay to keep our public safe. And really, basically, that's what it all comes down to. It's, it's not money that we wanna spend, but I think it's money that we decided that we were spending wisely. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call, please.
Dole.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Stand adjourned, thank you.